Good evening. I'll call the Planning Commission meeting to get -- goodness. I'll call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order. It's now 6:30 PM. We are at the City of Sammamish City Hall, Council Chambers. And today is Thursday, November 1st. So the first item of business is called to order, and I'll start on my right tonight.
Rituja Indapurie.
Mark Baughman.
Shanna Collins.
Larry Crandall.
Eric Brooks.
Excellent. And there are six commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Garrison will not be joining us. She's not feeling well this evening. The next item of the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for meeting on October 18th.
Second?
Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, guys. We have to approve the agenda for tonight first, and then we'll do minutes. Sorry. Go ahead. Try it. Go ahead. It's okay. Do it. You can do it.
I move to approve tonight's agenda. Is that right?
Perfect.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda for this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay. And the agenda is approved unanimously. The next item of business is approval of the minutes. So go ahead. You can do it.
No, I'm not too good.
I moved to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2018 meeting.
Our second motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October 18th regular Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The minutes from October 18th are approved unanimously. The next item of business is public comment. So this is the non-agenda section of public comment for this evening. Anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing for this evening just needs to wait for the actual public hearing. So is there anyone who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item? Mrs. Victor.
My name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I gave each of you at your dais chair there two different maps. So my non-agenda topic is maps. What can we use them for and why are they important? And Jane Garrison has actually seen these in the past for me, so she's not here, but I know she's filled in on them. So the first map here, it's green and yellow and red. It's called aquifer susceptibility. And if you look at the map, you'll see that yellow is where the aquifer, which is underneath all the soil, is not very susceptible. It's low. And then green is where it's got a medium susceptibility, and usually that's right next to the red where it's got a high susceptibility. And you know me from speaking with stormwater, and there's a thing in NPDES, which is National Permit Discharge Elimination System. It talks about how stormwater, which is untreated, should not be infiltrated within a quarter mile of a sensitive lake. And Lake Sammamish is a sensitive lake. So if you kind of take your fingers and you run it along the shoreline here, you'll find that within a quarter mile, you're not really supposed to be infiltrating stormwater within there. And you can see a lot of that's red, right? Because there's a lot of red that runs along there. And then there's other places, too, like around Pine Lake and around Beaver Lake, because those are also phosphorus-sensitive. So they're sensitive lakes as well. So those are types of things we can see from maps. And the reason that you want to look at this is you don't want your aquifers to become polluted, because like in Izuaqua, they're having some problems with PFOS and PFOAs. And that actually is happening down here where the blue kind of area is outside of the city. And some of those wells that is done by the local water and sewer district, that actually serves the Kohani area. So a map can show you a lot on how the city's connected and things outside the city. So another way you could use this map is you'll notice up here in this kind of top part, there's a green outline. And if you look at the legend, it tells you that that is for the northeast Sammamish Sewer and Water District. And then if you look at the blue line, it says it's for Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. So if you look up here, the northeast Sammamish, they only have about eight employees. They're up here. There really isn't any growth going on in the city up there. They've only added about four houses in the recent times. Most of the growth is going somewhere else. And then you'll see where the blue area is. The water district serves outside of the city on both the top and bottom, north and south, and then it serves the rest of the city. And you need to have water and sewer in order to be able to build. So this map shows those types of things. It also does happen to be in the comp plan, but the blue is missing, so it's hard to see. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out. And then here's another map. When you're doing where to grow things, natural features down here in the bottom, it says you're supposed to recognize natural features and that, for instance, steep slopes and wetlands limit development potential. So if you look at this map here, where the gray is, that's not marked, and you can't see it, but that's where steep slopes are. And so if you had a legend for that map, that would really help. So maps are a really great thing. You can see a lot. You can talk about where to develop and how to grow. And I think that they're really important to do. So I wanted to tell you that some of the things you'll hear about in the public hearing are related to maps, and they're not small, tiny type of graphical errors, but they are important to know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening. My name, Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inwood Hill Road. I was not going to speak, but I just have a short comment. Over the last few days, there was quite a fracas. I'm not sure the right word, on some of the social media sites regarding certain topics. And Councilmember Stewart invited all these groups to meet at the Met Market on Tuesday evening at 4:45. So I had read through all this litany of all these comments. And so I show up there, and I get there a couple of minutes early, and there's no one there, so I think I got the wrong place. So I go back outside, and then I see Pam, you know, coming in with, you know, her stuff. And Mary came, and Karen Herring came, and Council -- and former Councilmember Odell stopped by for a minute. And Dawn Jaren's wife, Sue, came. And we talked for about two and a half hours. And I wish you guys could have been flies on a wall, because there was a lot of great talks about all kinds of topics, but in general, how to basically positively solve and approach a lot of the issues going on in Sammamish. And I don't know the reasons, and I'm not casting any stones, but no members of any of the social media groups chose to come and take advantage of listening and talking to Pam. But I was not sure that these guys were going to come. But it was an awesome meeting, and if any of you want to talk and get a little information about what happened, you can talk to me, or Mary, or Karen, or talk to Pam. But she did a good job at inviting and calling out, you know, collaborative talks between the parties, and we had a good time. Or at least I did. You guys have fun? Yeah, okay.
Paul, I hope you guys spent a few dollars in that market while you were there. I hope you spent a few dollars in that market while coffeeing.
I love their coffee. And their cookies.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? No? Okay. So we will move on to the next item of the agenda tonight, which is old business. And tonight is a public hearing on the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Docket applications process. And we will start with a staff presentation. They will go through all -- their presentation will include all three items, I'm guessing. And then when we -- I'll open the public hearing, accept public comment, close the public hearing, and then we'll go one by one on our deliberations. And staff made this handy little worksheet that shows us sort of the orders of events tonight. And also, there's three motions for consideration on the bottom, just to kind of help us gather our bearings. So with that, I will turn it over to -- is it David or Miriam? Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're continuing, as Shanna said, the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. So we're going to -- let me try that one. We're going to figure out our technical difficulties first. There we go. So we're going to quickly review the proposals and the staff recommendations, and then you guys will have the public hearing, and you'll be asked to make your recommendation to City Council about which proposals to put on the docket for 2019. So just a reminder that the decision of what's placed on the docket and which amendments get approved is entirely at the discretion of City Council. And also, you can recommend variations on the proposals submitted if you choose to do so. So later tonight, after the public hearing, you'll make your recommendation to City Council about which proposal should be on the docket for consideration. And then City Council will review your recommendation, as well as the proposals themselves, during their December 3rd study session, and have a public hearing and a resolution to set the docket the next day on December 4th. And then after that, any docketed items will be considered in the 2019 legislative review of the individual proposals. I know it's been a few weeks since we last met, so I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory. This year, we had three amendment proposals, all of which were text amendments. One came from a citizen, and the other two were from the city. So we're going to go through each proposal and the related staff recommendation. But during the work session last month, there were lots of questions about the Town Center proposal, so we've added in a few slides tonight to address some of that. There were also some questions about the errata sheet proposal. And I know Ms. Victor emailed you with some more details about her proposal earlier today, so I'm hoping you had a chance to look through those. And she's here tonight to give testimony as well. So before we go over each of the individual proposals and the recommendations in more detail, I wanted to just quickly talk about the criteria that we considered as we looked through each of these proposals. So we looked to make sure that the proposal related to an item on the city's work plan, if it related to an item on the city's budget, and if there was sufficient staff availability to complete a full review of that proposal in 2018. We also looked at consistency with the city's current policy and programmatic priorities as well. So the first proposal was to update the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the Urban Forest Management Plan once it's adopted. And the goal here was to create consistency between the two plans and to make sure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the new data and goals established through the Urban Forest Management Plan. Staff are recommending this proposal for consideration because it aligns with our work plan, has the needed staffing and budget, and is consistent with policy and program priorities. Are there any questions about this before I move on to the next one? So the second proposal was to add an errata sheet into the Comprehensive Plan and create a system for tracking and updating errors, as well as other updates. And the goal here was to reduce confusion for readers and ensure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the city's current terms and conditions. Staff are not recommending this proposal for consideration because it falls outside of the scope of what code allows. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So on the screen, you'll see the Sammamish Municipal Code that relates to the annual review. And you can see that there's limitations on the scope of what's allowed during this time. And the creation of an errata sheet falls outside of that scope. But the errors that were identified within the application would be within that scope. However, as staff, we're only allowed to present the information that gets submitted in the application. And in this particular case, the application called for the creation of an errata sheet and listed the errors just as examples. So based on that, staff are not recommending their errata sheet proposal for consideration, but we do recommend that the applicant submit a text amendment for those errors specifically during the next Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. Or if you guys would like to, you can recommend that City Council docket the three examples without the errata sheet. Are there questions about this?
Yeah, I have a question. Sorry. So are you saying that the application did not have very specific examples that needed to be changed? It was -- they were just used as examples and not as actual suggestions to change? And that's why you're asking for reapplication with very specific examples that should be changed?
Correct. So the application cited these examples as things that could be changed through an errata sheet. We would need the language of the application to say these errors need to be fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the difference.
It's also that the errata sheet cannot -- we can't -- we cannot add an errata sheet to the comp plan without making code changes to Title 24. So because we can't add the errata sheet without making the code changes, we can't make an errata sheet with those examples on it. So if we want to see those examples move forward, then we'll need to recommend to City Council that they docket just those items as technical amendments, as a text amendment. So we just need to -- we just need to change the proposal, which we can do. Go ahead. And maybe staff wants to go into a little bit more detail about why the errata sheet can't be done at this time. That might be helpful. Is that what you were going to ask, Mark? Oh, then go. Okay. Well, you asked your question first, and then they can go further.
I guess the question that I don't quite track here is the third docket added. Is it docket added to study a list of undescribed, you know, specific changes to the comp plan? So how is this different from that? Because all this is saying is we should create a list of things, go through the work and create a list of errors that need to be fixed in the comp plan. From a technical standpoint, they seem like the same thing. I mean, it feels like we're caught up in this errata sheet description again. I feel like we're doing the same thing to the comp plan.
So the difference is, if you see on screen K at the very bottom, so really, the difference is that that proposal, Proposal 3, was submitted by the city, and the city has a little more leeway to make proposals.
Yes, the citizen proposals don't have the same ability to change policy.
Do you mind if I add?
Yes, please.
So I'd say the primary difference is that with the Town Center proposal, we are -- or the city is proposing to -- the city has specifically said we're going to study the Town Center Subarea Plan, which is a subset of the Comprehensive Plan, and has given specific, relatively specific indication of which things in that plan may change, or which items or which topics in that plan might be addressed. And then we'll bring more specific changes to you next year. And that process is relatively common as part of the docket, where we'll say, we're going to study this issue right here. The time to study -- or the time to discuss or present very specific changes to that is not this process. That comes next. But we're kind of setting the stage for what we want to study next year within the Town Center Plan. With the errata sheet, the proposal is to add -- the proposal is not as submitted was not to change specific things. The proposal was to create, I believe, the proposal was to add some sort of list to the Comprehensive Plan that might include certain items depending on what citizens submit to staff, or however the process would work. So the difference is, the Town Center item is actually specifically telling you what it is you're going to be studying next year, whereas the errata proposal is more a proposal to add an element to the Comprehensive Plan that would be a bit more process-oriented, or, you know, would not -- it's not an actual amendment to the plan. It's just an addition to the plan that would help staff consider more changes. So if that -- does that make sense? Or it's not -- the errata sheet is not actually suggesting amending the Comprehensive Plan in any way. It's just suggesting adding a list to it, which is not something that is -- that we're allowed to consider as part of this process.
And is it -- and because my understanding was that this errata sheet would be a flowing list, like an ongoing list, does that -- did that also play into consideration when you were making your proposal as to not include it as part of this process? Or no?
So I think there's two different ways you can define what an errata sheet is. One way, I think, is as a list that the staff would keep throughout the year, where other city staff or citizens could submit things that they see in the Comprehensive Plan that they like changed. And then at the time of the year when we accept docket applications, an application would be submitted that included all of those things. The other way you can look at an errata sheet is just as a piece of paper that kind of calls out things in the Comprehensive Plan that might not be super clear, or might be slightly off, or that are confusing in some way, and it would serve just as a reference for people to look at it and say, okay, you know, this explains that, you know, in map 2.1, the legend has, you know, this is red and this is blue, but on the actual map, it's the opposite. So it's an opportunity to have something to, you know, clarify certain things. And I've -- in my explanation, I've forgotten your original question now.
Should we add things?
Oh, right.
That was an ongoing list.
Yes. So in either one of those cases, we're not commenting on whether it's a good idea or not. We're -- I think what we're saying is, in either of those cases, the appropriate way to initiate something like that would not be through a Comprehensive Plan docket application. So again, we welcome -- it's not that we don't want to see anything changed, it's that we already have a process whereby people can apply to change things in the Comprehensive Plan. And for the -- in the example, that it would serve as kind of an ongoing list of things to change. And the other example, where it's serving as kind of a clarifying mechanism for people to read it and understand certain things about the plan. That would also not require a Comprehensive Plan docket, because it would be something we could do separately. It wouldn't require an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, which is what this process is for. So hopefully, I didn't talk myself in a circle there, but.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So would the errors be taken up if only staff, if you were just notified, right? So it sounds like Mary pointed out these issues that really should be addressed. She just pointed them out as examples for a different process. But if she elected to not rewrite her docket proposal, would these things that she's brought up remain unaddressed? That's one question I have for you.
It's actually up to us. So we can change the proposal tonight to make it so that those text amendments get changed in this current 2019 process.
Right. But I think it -- maybe I'm fumbling around. The illustration is that someone in the public has brought up some things. And I think that there's two different ways it can go. I'm looking at this as there's a typo, or there's a map reference, or something that if I had that correct decoder ring, I would -- it would suddenly increase the usability of the document at large, right? And I can see, and I used -- I brought up the idea about building codes before, and oftentimes, they do that, because they don't want to go through -- and it's for different reasons. It's not because there's a certain public process that has to go through, but because you have to republish it, and it's just a huge pain, right? And so they have these -- you can go to their website and pull down the errata, and it tells you all these kind of mistakes, and it increases the usability of the code in general. And I see that as being what I -- my vision, I don't know if it shares, if it's shared with Mary, but that's where I'm looking for. And I understand that it's not part of a Comprehensive Plan technical thing, but it seems to be a need that is there. And I don't see that there's anybody kind of in charge of keeping track of this living list. And if we can at least give the public some comfort that someone is going to do that, that could be helpful.
So what we can do tonight is twofold. I was just going to jump in, if you guys don't mind, add to whatever I miss. What we can do tonight, we can make sure that the amendments that Mary has pointed out are changed in the 2019 process. And then we can ask staff to initiate a process so that we can have an errata sheet, but we need to make code changes to Title 24. So we can do that next year as part of our work plan. You know, we can -- we can't do it, but we can ask council and advise council to put that on the work plan so that we can make those code changes, so that we can have an errata sheet. And at that point, we'd go through this process where we decide what sort of an errata sheet would we want. The one that you just described, like as in a building code, or a different kind where we'd do a text amendment every year that staff does. So we can go through the process of deciding which type of an errata sheet we want. We can go through legal counsel. We can clean up some other things, like criteria for the docket process. We can do a lot with Title 24, I think. But I think what staff is pointing out is that we can't do it through the comp plan process, but we could make a code change. It's not like this can't be done. It just can't be done through the comp plan process. So that's how I take it. Is that -- okay.
I think so. And I just, Commissioner Burris, I just want to address your question. So there's two parts to it. I guess we do -- so we do advertise the docket process, and in the case that a citizen wants to see a change made to the Comprehensive Plan, we have an application for that. We have a whole process for that. And in the case that somebody wants to see a change, they can apply, submit an application. And then by submitting an application, we're obligated to present it to you and provide you with the opportunity to decide if you think it's something that the City Council should consider. That's what that process is there for, and we think that that's sufficient for allowing -- for providing the opportunity for citizens' concerns to be heard by the Planning Commission and the City Council. To your other question about staff, generally speaking, the amendments that staff brings forward as part of the docket process, we don't have somebody who usually, who kind of goes through the comp plan every once in a while and checks to see what's right, you know, if there's something off. Generally, it's driven by our work plan priorities. So in the case of both of the city-initiated amendment proposals this year, you know, obviously, we've been working on the Urban Forest Management Plan for a while, and the Town Center, you know, is a topic of great interest right now. So that's what drove those. Generally, we don't tend to propose things just because, or just that are unrelated to things that we're doing. So that's why -- that's generally the process. Again, generally speaking, we try to focus on things in the Comprehensive Plan that have an effect on the work that we do every day and are going to have an effect on the big work plan items that we have. We're not so focused on typos and this and that. But again, that's what the process is there for, is if citizens see something that they have a, you know, relatively easy application they can fill out, that, you know, we then turn around and present to you for your consideration.
So one little response I'd add to that statement is that, at least from my perspective, and I think probably from many people's perspective, there's a difference between a change and a correction. A change is changing zoning from R1 to R4. That's a substantial change. A correction is something that really should have been there all along. I think, I understand that maybe this perhaps can't be a docket item, but I would view it that it is a little different than just, well, just change it every year as part of the docket process, because a lot of these things are really not in the same category as what's typically on a docket list.
I understand and appreciate that, and I certainly, I agree with you. But in the eyes of the code, changing, you know, if someone spelled 2 T W O instead of T O O, technically speaking, we would have to go through the same process to change that as we would to change something from R1 to R4. So unfortunately, the requirements for changing the comp plan don't change with how complicated a correction it is. But I understand your point.
So can I, just for clarification, so when we discover an error of any kind in the comp plan, the only way to fix it is through the docketing process, is that, am I right in saying that?
I think so.
So if something is spelled T O O and it should be T W O, the only way to change that is to get it on the docket?
Correct. Yes.
Or keep track of it on a list, and then the comp plan gets updated every eight years and we can change it as well.
You can change it. Which is why I think we should -- which is why I think we need -- which is why I think we need an errata sheet.
Just outside.
Yeah. And maybe we should wait for our debate for the public hearing process. So -- but that's why I'm kind of hinting that I think we need one. I just, this isn't the right -- sorry, I know, we almost got there. So if we don't have any more questions, then we can move on. Any more questions?
I probably have more questions, but I'll save it for the debate.
Sure? Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the third proposal.
Okay. So the final proposal for consideration was to review the goals and policies of the Town Center Subarea Plan and the Comprehensive Plan to address quality-of-life areas. As a result of the feedback that you had during the work session, staff decided that if docketed, we're going to limit the review to the goals and policies of the following quality-of-life areas. So the Green Spine, the Urban Forest Canopy, Public Transportation, Regional Stormwater, Solar Generation, and we would also like to add Public Ride-Away Design Standards. These are areas that we've been hearing a lot from the public are very important. And because the Town Center Plan, which we discussed last time, was adopted 10 years ago, we want to make sure that what's written still reflects Sammamish's values and priorities So the slide on screen is included because we wanted to show that how these specific areas relate to our goals and policies. And this is what we'd be looking at. And this is what we'd be looking at as we dive more deeply if this gets docketed. We've also added Samamish municipal code here, so you can see how those will impact, or how those relate to code, because this is what's going to provide direction and make sure that the goals and policies get implemented. So if this item is docketed for each of these areas, staff would take time and analyze the existing language and develop some recommendations. We'd then share those with the public to get their input and refine our recommendations accordingly. And then after that, we would bring that to planning commission and city council for discussion. Another item that was requested was a map of town center and the area surrounding it so that you can see what's been developed and what's remaining. And so that's what's currently on screen.
Miriam, can you go back to that matrix?
Absolutely.
Would you mind explaining a few of the, oh, the, the matrix before this even? Or the grid?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the green spine and what you mean by that?
I'm.
I'm sure, I'm sure I should know, I just don't.
The.
Is it, is it like a circle around?
The green spine, I'm not the expert at, you know, take this one.
Through town center? Oh, okay.
Hello, good evening. Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager here at the city. Would you mind repeating your question for me?
Can you give me an idea of what the green spine is and how, how it would be addressed in the subarea plan? Is it like trying to acquire pieces of land? Is it saying you can't cut down this tree? What is it?
So the green spine in regards to the town center plan is actually a park. It's a linear park that, in the, and, sorry, we don't have a map here to show you, in the A1 zone of the town's, town center subarea, which is our most dense urban part of town center. Just think of it north of Samamish Commons, crossing Southeast Fourth, and extending about two blocks. Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
So you'll see the lower commons right there, and you see that little notch property to the north. If you would continue north from there, Southeast Fourth, and then imagine a couple of cross streets that do not exist, it would go, it would extend up to that point. So yes, the green spine is a park. It is a.
Would it go all the way to the, like, to the red line?
Yeah. Do we have a pointer or?
Laser pointer. Yeah. Sorry.
Is there, is it up there?
Especially in the corner, around the. Yeah, am I able to use the? Is it this?
You can use this too.
Yeah. I mean, it's possible. It's a little easier.
I'm sorry, these are just things I always hear about, and I, I kind of just wanted a better idea.
Little laser pointer. Okay. So it is, goes, extends from right here. So this is actually part, part of the green spine. It's existing city of Samamish parked land as part of Lower Commons Park. The green spine would extend north this way, here's Southeast Fourth, and it would come to about here, and that would be kind of the northern extents of it.
Oh, I'm just gonna move around.
So it's, it's really envisioned in the town center plan as this large pedestrian corridor that hosts a bunch of different uses, including outdoor seating for cafes, play areas for kids. Just think of a downtown park, like a downtown Seattle Park or Bellevue Downtown Park, very similar in nature. The town center subarea plan discusses it and gives a, gives a good visual of what that would look like. I would say the town center infrastructure plan does a better job of explaining what the green spine is, and that is also an adopted plan related to the town center.
And if we were to look into this and seek public comment, is it, I mean, is it like trying to come up with development agreements so that the properties, owners of these properties would set aside that space for the intended use?
Yeah.
So I mean, that intended use is now not legally binding, is that how it?
Yeah, I think where the town center plan is a little bit too vague is that it describes the green spine as 60 to 120 feet wide, doesn't give it a defined width. Gives it a general location, which I just pointed out on the map there, and, and, and talks about some of the uses, dividing, dividing the green spine up, as, you know, uses within the green spine that relate to surrounding development. There, so there's a lot of area for interpretation. I think when we look at the goals and policies around the green spine, we may want to be a little bit more clear on what that expectation is from the city. And, and when we're reviewing those policies and goals, from today's perspective, again, our town center plan is 10 years old, is it, is it, is it doing what we need in this community? Is it providing that open space that's appropriate for the town center? And gives direction for us as city staff to refer back to, when we are working with developers and we're trying to explain this concept to them, are we providing enough information for them to build it as part of their development plan?
And are they required to do that?
Yes.
At, at this point? So if someone owns a piece of property in that area, are they required to have that space?
Yep. Any development of the A1 zone does have a requirement to contribute if they're adjacent to that general area of the green spine as envisioned in the town center plan. Again, it's a little bit vague in the town center plan, so we'd want to really strengthen that language.
So the goal is to strengthen it rather than, than make anything more legally binding? It's just to strengthen the idea?
Definitely strengthen it, and then that helps us develop very clear regulations to enforce it. And right now, we do, but I think we need to look at that vision a little bit closer.
Thank you very much. And can we go back, because I have one more?
Kelly, you might want to stick around.
Well, maybe, before I go again, does anybody else want to identify and want to take a closer look at any of these and what they're actually thinking about doing with any of these topics?
Yeah, I might ask about the, you know, solar generation, and, and if that can be, there's net zero energy type of thing. I mean, there's a lot of latitude in solar generation. Are we just charging our cellphone with the solar panel, and is that as far as we're going? Are we trying to, over the course of the year, use zero energy off the grid? That's, you know, one question I would have.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. In the town center plan, there's reference to sustainable measures. Again, very broad, it can include a lot of different elements. And going through this process of reviewing goals and policies, is, do we need to be a little bit more clear on what that includes? So in this case, it'd be solar generation, but is there more that we can expand on that? And going through this process of review gives us an opportunity to have that discussion and, and further define that.
So what's the benefit of that? I think the, what's in there? Is there? Is it? That's probably a better topic than just solar generation. I guess I'm just not sure, are you allowed to get outside of those?
I think so. I think it's, again, solar generation has come up, and, you know, doing, if this item is docketed, doing the research and coming back and presenting what we find, we may find that this needs to be expanded a little bit more due to new technologies, best management practices, and so forth. So even though we're categorizing this as solar generation, we really do need the time to look into that a little bit further, and so we can provide you that information as you are reviewing our existing goals and policies. I can tell you right now, I'm going to give away the ending, there is nowhere in our comprehensive plan, our town center plan, that references solar generation. So we're really kind of starting with square one on that one. But we do, staff would need the time to do the research and get the information together and provide that to you, and you may decide, yep, we want to focus on solar generation, or we may want to expand this a little bit, so.
Okay.
Just quickly, because we're all, and this is a question, and it's probably like the solar generation, on public transportation, is that mainly about the North Samamish Park and Ride?
Yeah, so in the, I feel like I'm the town center library today with all my impacts and references. So the transportation, yes, that definitely started the conversation with the Sound Transit Park and Ride. As some of you know, the, there's been, it's referred to as the North Samamish Park and Ride, it has been slated for, in Samamish. Now, in North Samamish versus South Samamish, that's still to be determined, so let's, we won't let that title be too confusing. And we have been talking with Sound Transit, we have been talking with King County Metro, and there is an interest to maybe look at the town center. And now, the town center plan itself does talk about a transit center, talks about transit-oriented development, it talks about a need to coordinate with Sound Transit and King County Metro, but does it say we need to have a transit center in town center? No, it doesn't. So again, a lot of good points in there, but really strong policy language, I would say, is lacking to direct that. So in our code, we do not require a transit center in that, in the, in the town center. So this is one of those conversations with developers where we, we, we try to get to an agreement, and it'd be nice if we had some strong policy language to fall back on for those discussions.
Would it also be like bus stop infrastructure, bus lanes?
I mean. Yeah, I mean, so right now, the, yeah, the Park and Ride project would be, I guess, how they have it slated and outlined, and they're very much in their early stages. It would be a surface parking lot, about 200 stalls. So if we're looking at something for town center, it would need to be structured because surface parking lots are very limited, and you would need to make sure that you're designing the appropriate road infrastructure to support a transit center, a transportation center. And, and actually, that coincides with the public right-of-way design standards, that is also on that list for consideration, because that does need support, street infrastructure for that type of facility.
Thank you.
Can you go a little bit into the public right-of-way design standards and why you decided to add it?
Oh, yes, this one's my favorite. So when they, when they adopted the town center plan in 2009, staff got to work pretty quickly thereafter on the regulations, the town center regulations, which is, which are found in 21B. At that time, they developed interim street standards, and they approved those interim street standards by resolution. So when we have a development, or a developer come in and they would like to propose a project, we have to refer them to a resolution to get their, to find out what the design standards are for public right-of-way within town center. I do not believe there is any city in the state of Washington that will send, that has their, their street standards housed under a resolution. So these are usually found in your public work standards, which are part of your code. So it's been a project of mine to get it out of resolution and get it into our public work standards. And so the public right-of-way standards, that's the type of work we need to do. In the town center plan, there are goals and policies around the design standard, standards, but this would be a really good, good time to maybe review that further and, and get some direction on what these urban street, is that what we're referring to, urban street standards would look like, and give us some better direction so we can get that all put into code and into our public work standards.
That makes me ask a question, which maybe it's not, what's kind of the expectation that they're hoping to have in the process? I'll make sure we're going to come out and just next year change the comp plan and part of, you know, the code update process and other policy changes, is that kind of the expectation?
For all of these? So I think this, right now, what we're asking is that we look just at the goals and policies. Some of this work is already underway. For example, the urban forest canopy, or first, urban forest management plan. Actually, we are getting started on the regional stormwater plan. There's the T M P. So this, we, we wouldn't develop new strategies. We would be looking at the goals and policies around these topics and then start to integrate them in work that's either underway or create a work plan to do so. And again, it, it depends on what, what comes of the discussion around the review of the town center policies.
Then eventually, we'd need code changes?
Yeah.
To make anything?
Definitely.
Okay. Since we've been through all the topics, why don't we just talk about regional stormwater?
Okay.
This is helpful to me. I hope it's helpful to everybody else to know kind of where we're going on each of these items. Because my idea of regional stormwater is that we have the property owners work together to build a regional stormwater system. So do we have something like that in place now?
Unfortunately, we do not. The city does desire a regional stormwater system for town center. We do not have the code to support it or enforce it. So in this case, we do, this is actually referred to in, in the goals and policies. It could be stronger language. It's also referred to in our comprehensive plan. I think it's under capital facilities, or maybe land use, that the city does desire co-mingled or co-located facilities wherever possible. So in the case of regional stormwater, we wouldn't require just a regional stormwater system, we would require it to also have a dual purpose. So maybe it's a recreational space. So it's serving a function, but it's also providing a need for the community and, and for the town center subarea. And we do not have language currently in our town center plan that, that actually dictates that or, or directs that type of work. So though we're starting to get work, going on that strategy plan, it would be really helpful to develop some policy language to give us some very clear direction on what this community would like to see in a regional facility for stormwater, other than just treating stormwater. They like it to go beyond that as envisioned in our comprehensive plan.
So it's, it's kind of a subarea stormwater?
Yes.
Because when I, when you see regional, you think like regional transportation, you think of larger, I'm just wondering how that would work, but it's really like.
Yeah. In this, in this case, it's just for the town center subarea plan, or subarea.
Any other questions? My last question is this, just because I want to make sure that this is true. So is there any way, when we open this up, if we were to docket this item and open up the goals and policies, is there any way to change density through that type of process?
No, we would, we are keeping it to just the goals and policy review, and those are the fence posts right there. Our town center plan does clearly state a cap of 2,000 units. We are not touching that. Are the cap of 600 square feet of commercial space. That will not also be addressed as part of this docket item. It would just be a review of the goals and policies, as you see here, under these headings.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And actually, I can send you something better, and that is a link to our town center webpage, where we have an update of all our projects, where they currently are at. Again, not to give away the ending, they're all completed except for Sky Apartments. It also provides all of the background information, so a link to the town center plan, the town center infrastructure plan, all the resolutions, the E I S draft and final, for those who can't sleep at night, please enjoy that reading, and everything you need to know. And trying to think what the, oh, and then even more specific information about each of the projects. I do, I can also provide you a development map that shows you the development that is currently underway. And, yeah, I have a lot of information on town center, so if I miss something, please reach out, yeah, yeah.
I asked about this frequently, people will say to me, so what is the boundaries of the town center? Where does that go? And just having it down, like, oh, and just that one?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other information's fantastic, but. The other information is fantastic, but-
Can you check your speaker? It's not on, I don't think.
Great.
Does the green light turn, too?
I'll talk loud.
Okay. I definitely can send you that map.
I guess Rasheen's isn't working either.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, you need to have something-
Sure.
Small and simple, because I know that there's a lot of information that you just described, but sometimes it's just a conversation about where are the boundaries?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep, absolutely, I can send that. And since I have all of your attention, I do want to have a brag moment. We just completed work this summer on a user guide on how to develop the town center. That is also in the background chapter of our webpage. So I do, I will send that to you, just because I'm really proud of the work that we completed on that. And it provides developers the city's vision on how the town, or on how the greenspine should be developed, so. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Staff, go ahead and finish your presentation. Sorry, I completely derailed it.
No.
But I thought that was important, so.
It's not derailing. So staff are recommending this proposal for consideration because implementation of town center is a high priority for the city. And we really think that there's importance to having that guiding vision and making sure that, that guiding vision aligns with the priorities and the needs of our city today. So this item is not currently on the work plan, but our department director, hi Jeff, has committed to making space on the work plan if this item does get docketed. And additionally, we have the staffing and the budget. And this proposal, as you saw on that previous slide with the grid, aligns with so many of the policies and goals that we already have. Any questions? Okay. So before you open the public hearing, I just want to remind everybody that the next step is on December 3rd. City Council will have their study session, followed by a public hearing and resolution to set the docket on December 4th. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, so next on my list is to open the public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. The first person I have on the list to speak is Mary Victor.
Seven minutes or seven? Seven.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Yes, maps are great. They're worth a thousand words, and I think they're really important to have, and they're important to have so they can be used correctly. Just to let you know that the city was initially incorporated in 1999. The first comprehensive plan was in 2003. There wasn't another comprehensive plan until the current one of 2015. They started work on it in 2012. So we went from 2003 all the way to 2015. And then the first time they allowed docket items, I did ask for the map updates. And it went all the way through city council, and city council said, what do you mean? We have to docket something just to change a map? And I remember Commissioner Brooks actually said, we should have a way for smaller little things to be able to get through and not have to do the large process. So then the second, so then I thought about the errata idea. I brought it up, but I had missed the deadline or whatever, and I couldn't do it. And then the next year, I didn't see the deadline, so I didn't do it. So this year, I thought I'd send in the errata with the stuff you'd populate on the errata, thinking they could choose either one. But once you have the deadline, you can't change it. And I was driving 700 miles the weekend. It was supposed to be submitted, so I wasn't able to change it from the errata to the technical. The whole point of having the errata is it shouldn't be a big deal to do small, small changes that are kind of important. This is just not about putting an extra M in Sammamish or changing two into two. It has to do with the usage of the maps. And if you really are going to limit development based on steep slopes, you need to know that steep slopes are gray on the map. The legend was missing. So I originally got these maps through a public records request, and it took, I think, 48 days to actually track this all down. And then this one, they were never able to find the map because the server fell, but they found the replacement map, which is better. So this is the one in the comp plan, and this is the other one. And they're very useful. I've spent two hours with five of, excuse me, four or five of the city council members just talking about maps and their importance for growth. So it is important to do this, and it is important to get the changes. So the first time, they wouldn't take the changes. The second time, they thought the errata sheet was better. This time, I'm doing the changes as part of the errata sheet, but I've done it in the wrong thing. And it just seems like it shouldn't be that hard. And the important thing that you need to know is, the comprehensive plan is supposed to happen every seven to eight years, so you might not be able to get some changes in because you don't want to do the reprinting, but you need to track what those things are. I would even like to know, like, two years or three years from now, that, oh, Urban Forestry Management Plan was put into the comp plan in 2019, and that the town center thing was updated then. And I can't remember what we did last year, but I think just having a tracking of those changes is important. So I think the process could be tracked actually outside the comprehensive plan. These maps maybe could be produced outside of the comprehensive plan, but they're kind of for doing in it, so it kind of makes sense to make these two updates. And then on the Bikes Trails Pathways Plan or the TBP Plan, that was actually Jessie Bond, who used to be with Parks, and she became the deputy city manager. And she realized that trails, bikeways, and pathways aren't just parks, they could be under transportation, they could be sideways, sidewalks, they could be non-motorized. So they changed the name of it. They haven't changed the concept for what it's doing, but you're going to see changes. You're going to see changes come from state and national levels. Even tonight, you've had questions about what the terms are. You are going to have some small changes that when you're reading those documents and you're going through alphabet soup and learning 50 million acronyms, it's really hard to look it up and make it meaningful. So I think the errata sheet is a great idea. I think David Goodman alluded to it could be done outside. It might not be legally binding, but it's really a clue-in sheet. And you guys had some great discussions at this meeting at the prior when I was not. Mark Baughman had said, it really is just a to-do list or something that you'd keep. And maybe you never would make the changes, but the information is there. Like, you need a thing that says, on this steep slopes map or on this natural features map, the steep slopes are gray, the wetlands are green, because usually wetlands aren't green, and then the parks are dark green. I think Eric, Eric Brooks also had some excellent comments about how just having a simple code or changer helps you really, really understand things. Like, I've heard this green spine come up a lot in discussions. They even talked about changing it to a green courtyard or something or other to make it a more useful term, but it hasn't been changed. We have to have those things to make our, our materials, our documents that we have and our priorities, we have to be able to do them. And so I've been a very dedicated person for stormwater. I started coming to meetings in March of 2015, so I'm three, working on four years. It's been more than three and a half years. I try to follow every process. I try to meet the deadlines. I stay up at the meetings past midnight to try to do the right thing. And if I can't figure out how to make small changes that people see might be important, then maybe you need some sort of processor system. Because you also, like I heard tonight, that if this, if the city kept the errata, then they'd be able to submit the changes, and it wouldn't have to come down to Jane asking for the transportation change and me asking for the steep slope change. It could just be done by the city because they have more flexibility. So I think it really is important. It's not to annoy anybody or to give more work or to make you reprint things. It's just to clue in people that are reading. And I do notice on the front page of the web, on front page of the website, you're asking for people to join commissions, including the planning commission. You're going to have new people come in. I remember when Matthew Petrich came in, he took a little while to get on, then he really started reading things. He would find errors and want them done. You're going to have people that are going to come in, that are going to read those. And it's just a quicker way for them to digest it and see the evolution of how things going on. Because eight years is a long time. 2003 to 2015 is a really long time, and we haven't really been able to get any changes in, other than the big changes in. So I'm trying to do it to help. People say my stuff is always helpful, but if it doesn't get put through you or the council, I'm wasting my time. So I hope you'll consider, the maps really are important. I would love to have at least the two maps changed, just the non-motorized, if there could be a comment. You don't even have to make all the changes, just comment that it's been renamed, and it was renamed for a good reason. So I won't take the full seven minutes. I do support the other two docket items. I think the work the staff is doing is great. And I really wanted to thank you guys. The last couple of meetings from the planning commission, I think, have been really excellent. Everybody's participating, you're asking good things. When you had the joint session with city council, that was probably the best meeting I've seen in three and a half years. So keep doing what you're doing. You are moving forward. You can make changes with what you're doing, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, commissioners. My name, Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inwood Hill Road. And I was holding up a can of worms. Because I'm going to talk about the thing that is hard to talk about. Well, it's not hard to talk about, it's not wanted to, you know, chat about. First, I do support the Urban Forest Management Plan integration, and I support a form of Mary's errata sheet, if it can be found out how to do it. And I support the Town Center Quality of Life Update, and here's the can of worms, with a suggested motion to recommend making changes to the 2,000 residential unit cap and the 600,000 commercial. And you'll notice, I did not say increase or decrease. That's on purpose. Make, make a change. And before I speak to the motion, a couple of weeks ago, there was a comment that, it went something like, I can tell you a thousand times, this is not about increasing any of the residential or commercial use in town center. I'd, I'd like to take that comment and say, well, actually, I think this is about 68,000 times doing exactly that. This has to do with the 64,000 people that live here today, and the 4,000 jobs that are in our community that do not live here. So speaking to my motion, the emails I sent today, including how the wheels and cogs turn with unbalanced or balanced housing, information I've turned in over the last year to you and the city for a couple of years, you know, before that, and the comments in this evening's printed copy of my public comment. Changing caps would be based on internal housing balance to modestly optimize housing supplies and services in relation to housing and economic wants and needs for those living and/or working in Sammamish over recurring cycles of life. To do this, it would require making changes to numbers and policies in the comp plan to modestly optimize, I'm talking, move from where we are a little based on wants and needs, to private built environment, single-family housing, multifamily housing, economic uses, and community affluence, wealth, and advantages on a citywide scale. Fundamentally, at its core, these comp plan changes would be to internally lessen single-family housing types we as a city have surpluses of, increase single-family housing types we have shortages of, increase multifamily housing types we have shortages of in centers. Based on those three changes, right-size economic opportunities, and increase affluence and wealth, and improve the environment, transportation, community character, finance, and Sammamish livability in, in doing so. Because as the wheels turn, there is far more advantage across all the cogs that land use turns with housing that is optimally balanced to wants and needs of our community over time. Now it's time to be specific. There are four numeric and, you know, policy errors to remedy in the comprehensive plan. First, the current Sammamish growth target was negotiated with King County, not knowing either internal housing need gaps or statistically valid survey wants. Second, part two of our comp plan needs to have over 120 surplus and shortage housing needs gaps between housing supply and households. Those are not known for all economic and all, all the demographic groups in Sammamish. Then we need to get statistically valid, objective methods to determine housing preferences less than and more than gaps. That's the second set of numbers that is missing. Then if you turn over your page, the third set of numbers missing is near absolute build-out of single-family. One can never get to 100%, but I think we could get to 90 to 95. And what we need to know as a city, and we as the Kings, we, is we need to know how many more single-family homes, based on current regulations currently in place, can be built on vacant R1, R4, and R6 lands, on under, developed, I'll spit out the D, R1 and R4 and 6 lands, redevelopment, large lot subdivisions, way more than you think, and the likelihood that many people will try to increase R1 lands that are, that are not under a critical area. We need to know the end game of that. With housing needs known, with statistically valid surveys known, and with the near absolute build-out of single-family housing known, then comes number four. Make legislative numeric policy choices to modestly optimize internal housing supplies for, to basically decrease housing types of homes that we have cycle of life internal oversupplies of, increase the types of home we have cycles of life internal undersupplies of, and right-sizing economics and affluence. What this is all about is to improve livability, lifestyle, and experiences for everyone in Sammamish as planned, as unplanned, as planned and unplanned housing changes happen over recurring 80-year cycles of life. This is much bigger than a 20-year comp plan. There's a little supplemental information that I knew I would not have time to speak, but this can has been kicked down the road far, far too long. We know our external regional growth target. We don't know and haven't planned for internal needs and wants over time, and it's time to do the hard thing, the right thing, open up the can of worms, get in the muck, have lots of differences of, of opinion. And my last comment is, I've talked about, everybody's position on growth is nuts. They're very passionate about where they are, and they think other people who do not agree with them are crazy. But not one of those people can, can argue or counter the fact that we've never had this information to inform our decisions on housing supply. And that's what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. Okay, I have Karen Herring next on the list. Would you like to speak?
No.
No? Okay. And I also had Anna Yorba. Did you want to speak? No? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else? There's nobody else. So I will close the public hearing.
With, no, go ahead, close public hearing with-
Public hearing is now closed.
This is germane, especially to the public hearing, and I wanted to give a shout out to volunteers. The volunteer recognition dinner will be November 29th. And if you give to the community, sometimes the community gives back to you. So thank you for all the volunteer work that people do. And back to the night, no matter what happens with these docket items, I think we still want to encourage the speakers that have spoken tonight and ones that will speak another night. So please return. And today is All Saints' Day, and that's the reason I wore my tie to two meetings in a row, and this is going someplace. Tomorrow's All Souls, Souls' Day, and it was pointed out to me earlier that I'm closer to soulhood than I will be sainthood ever. And, and closing on, on another date, please mark in your calendar that National Chaos Day is Friday, November 9th.
National Chaos Day?
Yes. Chaos Day never dies.
With that, I'll ask for a motion. We'll start with the first, you know, we have the motions, A, so we'll start with the Urban Forestry Management Plan.
I'm sorry, can I ask a process question?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I missed this.
Sorry.
I don't quite understand. If we wanted to modify something?
Yeah.
Exactly how do we, how would we do that correctly?
Um-
So when you look at these docket items, there's a-
Right.
-description page that has applicant, description, summary. There's a lot of text in here.
Yeah.
And it seems like maybe valuable to change a word or two, but I'm not sure if that's really necessary, or what's the right process to do that?
I'll ask. Let's ask. We want to know, how, how will we change these? My, the- The way I visioned it was saying something like, "I move to amend proposal number two to do this and this and this," and that it wouldn't be verbatim. But do we need like a verbatim?
Yeah, that's kind of the question.
Proposal.
Particularly sometimes the changes then really probably change other things. And because it's not just a motion, that you're then amending the motion, there's actually, you know, stuff going on in a full-page document. I'm just not sure if it's necessary to literally change word by word, or what are we required to do?
Can you give an example of what type of change you're gonna, you are thinking about?
I'll give you one very specific example. If we were to suggest changing the errata sheet to just say, "We propose these three specific items," that changes almost all of the text in this summary document. And I'm not sure, can we just do that? Or do we need to, does it need to be very specific like that as an amendment or a motion? Or can it just be generalized to say, you know, amend it, remove the errata sheet, and just propose to change these three items, and then the specifics of that get handled later? How specific do we need to be?
I believe doing what you just described would be sufficient.
You are correct.
Okay, good. That makes it easier. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Okay. Okay. With that out of the way. Yeah, and then on the, you know, I think number one should be fairly straightforward. But on number two and three, we don't have to start with the, we don't have to start with the motion to approve it. If we already have an idea of what we're going to amend, let's start with a motion to amend. That's my preference, but, I don't know. So do we want to start with the Urban Forestry Management Plan? Yeah.
I move to recommend that the City Council place proposal number one, Urban Forest Management Plan, on the 2019 docket as written and presented.
There's a motion and a second to recommend that City Council place proposal number one, the Urban Forest Management Plan, on the 2019 docket and advance to legislative review. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. Okay, so that was an easy one. Number two, I'll take a crack, and then you guys can amend it if you don't like it. I move to amend proposal number two to include the three technical updates proposed by the applicant, but denying the creation of an errata sheet within the comp plan docket process since it is not allowed within Title 24 of the Sammamish municipal code.
I second that motion.
Oh. There's a motion and a second, we could deliberate if we want to.
I would only comment that I'm not sure that all of that is really...
Necessary.
The denying part.
Yeah.
It probably doesn't matter.
No, you're right.
But really, all we're doing is saying, "We want to modify this to include the three recommended corrections." And then I think we should have a separate discussion about the errata sheet concept.
Yeah, let's do that. Does staff get that?
I don't know if that really matters, but...
How about you just say, "I amend the motion to say what you just said?" Say like, say like, "I amend..." Is that all right? That's right, right? Yeah, "I amend the motion to..." Or I could just drop my motion. Why don't I just drop my motion? I can do that, right?
No.
You may withdraw your motion.
Okay, I withdraw my, I withdraw my original motion, and I'll turn the floor to Commissioner Collins.
And the second, second agrees.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, so we're a blank slate with number two right now, right? Okay, so I move to recommend that City Council place proposal number two on the docket and advance to legislative review with a modification that all references to the errata sheet be removed, and the proposed amendment specifically address the three corrections that have been noted within the comp plan.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Do we need to deliberate?
I call for the question.
Wait, wait, sorry, real quick. During the discussion, should we talk about how we want to advise City Council to put, doing the errata sheet on our work plan for next year? How should we, where should we talk about that?
Good evening. Planning Commission Jeff Thomas with Community Development. To answer that question, you'll recall that, or some of you actually will recall, that we took an update of Title 24 of our municipal code to you in 2017, I believe, at some point in the first part of 2017. That effort, after the commission completed its work, stalled out for a variety of reasons. So it's been sitting idling over in our parking lot, our work program parking lot, for a little period of time here. And we're hopeful, not only because of the conversation we've had surrounding this particular matter, but for a couple of other reasons, we'd really like to get that work back on track. And from a work programming perspective at the staff level, what we've been envisioning is bringing that back to the Planning Commission for a refresher for some of you, and then as new business, I guess, for others of you, early in 2019, and move that through City Council at some point here in 2019 before the end of the year. So the key, I think the key to the kingdom here on this one is we really need to go back and not only take the good work that the commission did on the Title 24 update in 2017, but we can make some additional improvements upon it early in 2019, and address this matter, and get that up to City Council for their review and hopefully ultimate approval. So is that helpful?
Well, in terms of us advising City Council, do we make that part of the proposal? Like, we're amending the proposals?
You don't have to. We're going to carry that water for you, from a work programming perspective, through our city manager's office, up to City Council.
Okay. So we don't need to make, we don't need to make any changes to the proposal to send it to City Council?
No, I think the motion that was made...
Sufficient?
Yeah, to make the focus switch there is more than sufficient to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
I also thought potentially that, just some commentary about the idea could be put in the cover letter, the transmit letter to the council to, you know, keep that concept going and consistent.
I agree. That's what I'd like. Did you guys catch that part? Write something in the memo that says something we want to work on, and this is how we'd like to address the errata sheet, because we do think it's a good idea. It would be nice to say something like that.
So on the subject of the errata sheet, is there something that we can do in the interim? Just like, you know, have, like, can the city do something in the interim, like have a, you know, a Google Form page where people can submit these ideas, and then the city collects it? Like, or is there already a mechanism which collects these suggestions?
We probably don't want to do that until we go through the process of like making an errata sheet, I think.
These are just suggestions that come from the public, right?
We can ask, I guess we could ask City Council if they want to do something like that.
So I want to understand if that's a policy issue, or is that something that a process issue, where the city can just take up on their own?
I would characterize it as a process issue, but we do have, I mean, we get emails and phone calls from time to time, people asking questions about it or having ideas, and we usually just direct them to the docket process. So in other words, it doesn't exist in a formal way now, but, you know, the comp plan is on our website, and our contact info is on the website, so that, I guess that's how it exists right now.
Okay, so the process is that if somebody wants to make a correction or suggest a correction, you send them to the docket process, and then they may or may not go through the process. So there's a chance that they just, it probably gets dropped off, you know, on your sheet, or it doesn't get tracked, potentially.
Yes, although I would characterize it more as that an application is not submitted on its behalf.
Right, yes, yes. Got it. Thank you.
So we have no formal way of tracking when people call and say, "Hey, I saw an error on one of our documents." We're not formally tracking that. It's up to the individual to go through the docketting process to try and get it changed. But as a city, we don't have a process of keeping track of all of those issues, like things that Mary comes up with or anything else. Am I correct in saying that?
That's right.
Personally speaking, when somebody writes, I mean, usually the issue is not a correction. Usually people want to know about some policy or the land use map or something like that. I usually keep a track of those things, just as a matter of practice. But it's not in any sort of formal way, and they would still have to submit something on their own, a docket application, that is.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Oh, I'm supposed to repeat your new recommendation. I'm not going to be able to do that.
Even I couldn't do that.
Sorry. There's a motion and a second to recommend to City Council to amend proposal number two to include just the three technical updates that have been brought forward by the applicant. Is that good enough? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and the motion carries unanimously. Good. So we're on to the third one, which is the Town Center Quality of Life Plan.
I just want clarification. I still am at here. So are we including the recommendation for errata sheet to be considered in the memo? That's the only thing we're doing, right?
Yes.
As far as that collection goes. Okay, thank you.
Right, yes. Okay, so now the Town Center Plan Quality of Life Update. Well, with this, this one, I'll just start with a motion to accept it, and then we can amend it. Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. I move to recommend City Council place proposal number three, Town Center Plan Quality of Life Update, on the 2019 docket and advance to legislative review.
Second?
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, and now we can deliberate.
So I had a question about the stormwater. I thought in 2016, we worked on the Stormwater and Surface Water Comprehensive Plan. So how is that related to the stormwater updates we're talking about in the, or changes in the urban, in the Town Center Plan?
The work that was completed in 2016 did not include any regionalization of stormwater. So this is, this is, this work would be more specific in scope and in boundary. We're talking about the Town Center subarea. So it definitely helps, and is our most up-to-date stormwater regulations. But this is, again, the work that we're doing for the regional stormwater plan is really clarifying our drafting policy to direct a regional system for our Town Center subarea.
And what would this, I mean, in this particular, the lifestyle update, would that go to describe it in more detail on how we would work on it regionally for the stormwater, like work with other entities? Or would this be, I'm trying to understand the substance of these changes that would go into the, into the plan.
Kelly, can you let me answer it real quick?
Sure.
I think I know where she's going.
Okay.
Christian Brooks made the best analogy to it, because you said, "This is subarea stormwater, not regional stormwater." It's like, when they say regional stormwater, it's collecting a bunch of property owners together, so you don't have to have like 10 detention ponds. It's like having one detention pond within the town center. So it wouldn't be working regionally with other entities. It's more like working with the property owners within the town center to develop one place where stormwater goes to. So like, you know, this little property is not doing one, and this one's not doing one, and they all go together and possibly recycle water. And there's all these, there's all these positive things that could happen if they did. But they call it regional stormwater. But it's really like, this, in this case, it would just be this, under the subarea plan for Town Center. Does that help answer?
Sure.
When we worked on stormwater, it was for the whole city.
Right. And that's the map I'm envisioning, you know, with all these different basins that were everywhere, and I think they overlapped in the Town Center. So I was trying to understand, where does that map fit into this and Town Center, basically?
Yeah, I mean, we have many sub-basins for stormwater. The sub-basins, I believe, for Town Center are Inglewood and Thompson, thank you, Mary. Those are the basins that, if you were to overlay that map over the Town Center subarea, those are the ones for Town Center.
Can you remind me, what was the, what was the exact item that you, you guys had suggested adding?
That was the Town Center Public Right-of-Way Design Standards.
I don't want to, I, well, it's not so much I can't speak for council members not here tonight, but I think that they probably really like the quality of life term. And I guess I'll speak for myself. And since we're moving to branding, vision, and missions for the city of Sammamish, I like the quality of life for the Town Center.
So I'm thinking of an amendment. Let me just do a, maybe a temperature check.
Yeah.
I think we should probably request that within the text of the document, that public right-of-way design standards get added to the list, so it's not unclear.
Yes.
Because I think, I don't think it's, it was, it's on the docket this way, and it doesn't say that. So I think that should probably be put in there. I'm also kind of thinking that maybe where it says, "This could include," maybe we should remove "could" and say "will include," so there's less leeway for other things.
Very good.
And I don't know if that's even necessary or a good idea, but that seems like that gets more at what we're discussing.
Yeah, if you're setting the fence posts, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, that's very good.
Okay, so I think what I'm going to do is move to amend the recommendation such that the text will be changed from "this could include" to "this will include." And then where it says "other areas," at the end of this paragraph, we replace "other areas" with "public right-of-way design standards."
I second the amendment.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to the amendment to replace the word "could include" to "will include," and to also replace "and other areas" with "public right-of-way standards," design standards. Any deliberation? I wanted to make one comment that I really support. This proposal, I think it's forward-thinking. I think during the time that we have now with the moratorium, I don't know how much longer it will last, but it's as good as time as any to open it up and see what the public thinks. There's clearly a lot of people out there who are not happy with what is proposed in the Town Center, and it'd be nice to hear from them and get some good ideas and see what we can do to improve the plan. It's been a long time since the plan was finalized. So I think the topics that staff has brought forward are really important topics, especially the public transportation and the regional stormwater. So I'm very supportive of the proposal.
I just, a quick comment, just to address Mr. Stickney's question or recommendation. From my understanding, staff is telling us that this kind of gets below the policy level type things that we're actually being asked to address at this point in time. This would be something that we would have to, once one of these other policies started getting opened up, and that's when this would come in? Is that correct?
I guess I need a little bit of clarification to your question. Is it, this is just a review of the goals and policies for those specific items?
Right.
Mr. Stickney had asked that we add something to increase the number of units in Town Center, and that is not what staff is recommending.
And I guess my question was more about, because we're dealing with policy, and these are dealing with numbers, that that's the big difference that...
Yeah, we're dealing with policy. Those numbers, that really happens at the major update as part of the comprehensive, developing of the comprehensive plan. That is, that's a major change, so...
It would be a completely separate proposal from either a property owner or the city.
Yeah.
I think I agree with what he said, Commissioner Collins. I think the one thing, which is not part of this policy, but I think public education and outreach is going to be very critical when we put this together. So I would highly encourage the city to do that. So I would highly encourage the city to do that, and public education especially, I think is very important, because the character of our city has changed in the past 10, 15 years.
It's a great idea.
Okay, so there's, did you want to say anything?
Only just to reiterate, I think that this is a great proposal. I think it's an opportunity for everybody who lives in Samamish. If you are in any doubt as to where the city is headed, you, you need to read the comprehensive plan, and you need to read the document on the Town Center. And then from there, come with questions as we go through this process. And if there's, if there's a direction the city is going in developmentally that you don't like, it's important to get involved in the process and not to sit on the sidelines, and to come and make your opinion known, and to listen and share ideas, and come with a collaborative mindset that we're all in this together. And I think all of us, depending on our various points of view, we all have one singular notion in mind that we all love this city, and we want it to develop in the right way. But you can't have your ideas known if you don't come and share them at the appropriate place with the right mindset and attitude. So I really think this is a terrific jumping-off point for something like that. So I support it.
I'm going to support it too, and just say, I know we can't change the word "city," the village, but that's what we're talking about this. Thank you, Mafaro.
Okay. Motion, there's a motion and a second to amend the proposal to change the words "could include" to "will include," and also to replace the words "and other areas" in the first paragraph to "public right-of-way design" on proposal number three. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. There we go.
That was the amendment, right? We still need to...
Oh, yeah, you're right. I thought we were done. Thank you. All right, so let's vote on the main motion, which is to approve, move to recommend, there are, there's a motion and a second to recommend the City Council place proposal number three, Town Center Plan Quality of Life Update, on the 2018 docket in advance to legislative review with the amendment that we just approved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and the main motion carries unanimously. Good. All right, so that's the end of that.
I do have a follow-up item that I would like to discuss, just very briefly, before we adjourn for this evening. We are slated to have a meeting on December 13th to discuss interim development regulations and to do a year-end review of all the great work that you've completed in 2018, as well as looking at the work plan for 2019. Through email correspondence over the last day, it's been proposed that we actually have a Planning Commission staff potluck, and I think that's a fabulous idea, Shanna.
Oh, it's Larry's idea. Well, actually, it's everybody's idea. I think everybody wants to celebrate.
Everyone should take credit for a very good idea. To do so, I would like to see if we could actually start our meeting early, like at 5:30, hoping commissioners can get here a little bit earlier than that to set up for the potluck. We would start our meeting off with a presentation by Sarah here on the year review for 2018, and then looking forward to 2019. And then at 6:30, or 6 o'clock, start the presentation with David on interim development standards. So to do that, I just need to get a head nod if the 5:30 start time would work. I know we have some folks who do work outside of the commission, if that time would work for everyone.
That's on the 13th?
On the 13th of December.
Can we make it on the 12th? Because Mr. Crandall can't make it on the 13th.
Ah, I would have, I, not, yeah, we have to check with the calendar. I'm not sure what is on that date, if we have a Human Services Commission meeting. I'd have to see what is on the calendar that evening.
Let's, let's do a head nod if you could do 5:30 on the 13th, and then let's look into the 12th if possible.
Okay.
Yes, for the 13th at 5:30.
Okay, perfect. Mark? Okay, good. We need a quorum. So fantastic. And I'll follow up with, with you, Shanna, on the 12th as well. If we did do the 12th, do, would folks be available for the 12th at 5:30?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. Yeah, okay, good. Great.
Not really, but for Larry, I'll...
Okay.
Whatever I need to.
Second?
It's the holidays.
I promise to follow up tomorrow, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, you guys know the drill for the last item, oh, sorry, the last item on the agenda tonight is adjournment.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 8:06.